And go.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, I can.
I can.
Is there a terrible echo?
There's an echo.
There is an echo, yes.
Is it from mine? Um. And put yours on mute.
I'm gonna guess you're gonna have to go on mute, Jack, until...
We were both on mute last time. It just picked up over here.
Yeah, Jack is on mute.
Okay, can everybody hear me yet? Okay.
I can hear you.
So it is eleven thirty-seven, something like that. And we're here today for a work session with the Jackson County, regarding the Jackson County revolving loan fund for COVID-19 assistance to county businesses. So I guess I'm looking for information from Matt.
All right, so just to give the board a little bit of background, the revolving loan committee met this week to discuss if there was any sort of gap that they should be looking at trying to fill with all the COVID-19 stuff going on right now, to use some of that Jackson County revolving loan fund. We kind of brainstormed. We met for an hour. We threw a lot of different ideas out there. And I can let Roger maybe speak to some of those, but...
I'd like to.
Okay, Rog, go ahead.
Well, no, no, I don't want to break in. Nah.
Well, I was gonna, I was gonna get into them, but you can, you can feel free, Rog, and I can add to what you're gonna say, so.
Okay. First of all, Matt, can you give the group an idea of what the amount of loans that we have out now, right now, just roughly? Is it near a million dollars of loans that are outstanding at this present time?
Let me, why don't you talk a little bit and let me look quick?
Okay, I just, a little background. And we did, as Matt said, we did have a meeting. We didn't come to any conclusions because we're searching for an answer, but we are not sure what the question is. And what I'd like to do, what I'd like to do this morning is simply throw out some ideas and get your reaction or some sort of idea on some of the things I'm gonna put forward. And I think that everybody on the line is a pay grade ahead of me because my pay grade over the last thirty years has been zero. So don't, don't, don't shoot the messenger here in regard to some of these ideas.
Well, did I hear you say you wanted to trade assets? Is that, is that what I heard?
Not exactly. Anyway, here's what I'm, here's what I think about. And I don't have any agreement from the people on the loan committee from the different banks. Keep that in mind. I don't have any. But they all wanted to get some idea of what the board was thinking about. And I'm not sure, again, I'm not sure what we can do under the bylaws or what we can do legally in regard to the revolving loan fund and the responsibility that the supervisors have in regard to oversight. But let's, let's go through a few what-if. And what if we set aside fifty thousand dollars for small business loans?
Okay, I'm gonna stop one second if I could, Roger, intrude. Is that okay?
What's that?
Can I have a little input here? What are we considering small business?
I would say, I would say it's a small business, and I'll get into that a little bit as we go along here. A small business is hard to define, but in Jackson County, it's anything, I think, with one employee and a storefront. That's just my idea. I'm not sure that's the definition that SBA or anybody else would have.
Does that also include the ag sector, so every farmer is a small business?
No, I wouldn't think that this would pertain to farmers because we've never dealt in regard to loans to farmers here. And if, and if we got into agriculture, which is badly deemed it, don't, don't get me wrong. But if you tried to deal with some of the farm credits that are out there, it might be opening a can of worms because there's a ton of farmers and a ton of need. And I don't know if we can solve that problem. Does that answer your question, Mike?
I, I guess so, Roger. My concern, my real concern is if this comes to fruition where these packing plants stay closed and they start euthanizing these hogs and cattle, we have a real problem. Then I think best issues, I think we have, yeah, mental issues. I, I look at some of these, you read in the TH almost daily about the abuse that's going on with grant money that's out there now that these businesses are getting. And you just hear horror stories of people taking advantage of us.
And, and that's, I agree with that, and I'm well aware of the ag problems and, and the fact that these packing plants are slowing up the process thing and it's creating... I can tell you this, this morning, Mike, to answer your question, and I don't want to get into it heavily, but on the futures this morning on cattle, on April cattle, which are gonna close next week, it's gotta come to an end on the futures. The futures were down four dollars and fifty cents this morning, and the futures price on April cattle was eighty, was eighty-one dollars. Now theoretically, the futures price and the life price have to come together. And if that's the case, it's gonna be a disaster for a little while here. So that doesn't mean, doesn't mean anything. I'm just trying to answer your question. Okay, can I, may I go on or do you want anything else? Okay, so we're saying we're, what if, what if, and maybe you want to jot this down, what if we were to set aside fifty thousand dollars for small business loans in Jackson County? And what if those loans would be in increments of five to ten thousand dollars? And that to be determined? So you'd have twenty to, ten to twenty loans, or, or, I'm sorry, there'd be five to ten loans, depending on how you set the loans up, what the parameters would be. And, and here's, here's a big question. And, and what if those loans would be under secured or not even secured? And keep in mind, over the years, the loan, the revolving loan fund has always been secured and always tried to protect the revolving loan fund in regard to risk. And without a doubt, I think we've been darn successful in that because we haven't had any problems over the thirty years I've been involved, thanks to the members of the revolving loan fund, not necessarily me. Okay, so what if we were set aside fifty thousand, five to ten thousand per loan? What if the rate was one percent? So if it was a five thousand dollar loan, it would mean payments of a thousand dollars principal per year over five years? What if the, what if, what if a committee of four or five people from Jackson County were to approve the loans, not the revolving loan fund group, but four or five people from the county? And for instance, might, they might be Wendy McCart from the chamber or a chamber board member, Kathy Till from Andrew, Patty Huffman from Preston, or Nick Hockenberry from Bellevue. Now, they would be making the approval because simply they know of small business maybe better than anyone. And that's, again, this is what if. And so in regard to that, that committee of whoever it might be would be set up. And all of this with the oversight of the Jackson County Economic Alliance Organization. And applications would, what if, the applications would define the business and the need and the use of the funds. So the, the application would be defining what the business, small business, would need and the use of the funds. The business would have to have, this could be, I, I'm just giving examples. The business, to your answer to the question, Mike, the business would be, could be, one employee and a, or, and/or a storefront business. That's to be defined. And the priority to the business is that priorities for the loans to these businesses would be for businesses that have been shut down because of the rules set up by the governor and have the ability, have the inability to give, get government assistance. So that's kind of just something that I wanted to bring to the table and so that we weren't searching for answers to... I just wanted to set something on the table. And if, here's what I believe, and that is, I don't know the answer to how we can be helpful with the revolving loan fund. I'm not, I'm not sure how we can do that. And I certainly, this all could be a bad idea, and the best thing that we could possibly do is just go forward with the rules and, and organization that we have for the past thirty, thirty-five years. And it's all started by when the Sleep Company came to McCoquin, and we got a grant for a million bucks. So this is out-of-the-box thinking, and I will not be in the least offended, any way, shape, or form, if you say this is a bad idea and we just simply go ahead with the, the way we've been doing it, looking for jobs, creations, looking for job creation and secured loans.
I guess my thought, Roger, is I, I like the idea if, if the applicants did not have the ability to get government assistance, that would be one of the criterias. I would like to know, either from Nick or Wendy, has there been inquiries about such a program? And to be honest, I'm a little worried about our own concerns on our county operations. We're gonna be really slighted for funding. I hear horrible concerns that the field tax is gonna mount to twenty-five, what did I hear somebody say, twenty-five million a month?
Yeah.
Reduction. So that takes our infrastructure money to very minimal. And these are loans, not grants, correct? And also, I'm a little concerned about our own general assistance fund. I've got a feeling that it's gonna explode on the courthouse here and our general assistance person or resource person to, that, the applicants, and I believe they probably are in the...
And Becky said she's had a lot more applicants than she's had in the past, obviously, with the things that are happening.
Well, I like, I like the loan idea. I don't mind the fifty thousand. I don't mind the one percent. I think, yeah, I mean, that, that really has no bearing on the percentage. We're not make, trying to make money here on it. You know, we're trying to assist somebody.
I, I don't know if you can hear me over mics without turning mine on, but it...
Can you hear Jack?
Yeah, I can hear Jack.
I guess my concern is when you look at fifty thousand dollars and you look at loans from five to ten thousand, even if you help ten businesses or not that many. I guess my concern is, I was in, I was in a small business for fifty-one years. There are a lot of people that would be in that same boat. So the minimum, I mean, we would be helping very few people when you look at the whole picture of the small businesses in Jackson County. Will we be able to make a difference? I guess that's, that's my real concern when we're looking at maybe a maximum of fifty thousand dollars. That isn't putting anything in, hardly in the bottom of the bucket.
That's well taken, that's well taken, Jack. I understand that.
And I think part of, you know, part of that number for discussion, that fifty thousand dollar number, is, you know, at the board's discretion, obviously. We, the conversations that the Economic Alliance had with, with Matt, Roger, and the review committee were really, you know, we don't know what that number is. We don't know if, you know, hopefully, there's not a need for some of these, some of these programs. And I think that's part of the other, the other element there. If they do qualify for the federal programs, then they wouldn't necessarily qualify for this or if that's, you know, on the table here as, as part of the guidelines. So hopefully, that would, you know, limit your, your eligible pool of applicants a little bit more. But to your point, Jack, yeah, no, I'm, I'm certain that there are many businesses out there who are in need in either the benefits through the PPP program or the Economic Injury Disaster Loan Program really did not amount to very much due to the formula that kind of determines how much assistance they can get. A lot of, a lot of those small businesses aren't, aren't, you know, weren't eligible for very much. And Wendy, I know, heard the same, heard many of the same thing from her members.
You know, Nick, thing I've heard is that they, the maximums have already applied. Unless the government gives more money, there's nothing to be had.
They did, another four hundred.
Yeah, so it's, so those applications are opening back up for the PPP and the IDOL. What we're finding as I'm talking to our businesses, as of Monday, we had sixteen that had just, and, and I'm sure this isn't everyone, but we had sixteen as of Monday who had reached out and told me that, yes, they had applied or they had missed that first round. And at that point on Monday, they had not received any grants, any funding, any assistance whatsoever. And that was, you know, I think sixteen is a very small representation about, you know, as compared to the entire county. Now, since then, I learned this morning that some have received some grants from the IEDA that opened back up. So that was very encouraging to see. And a lot of the businesses that I'm talking to are less worried about right now, but they're very concerned about two to three months from now. What does that look like? And I don't think anyone can answer that question because that's, you know, that's based on how quickly can we start opening things back up. So I think if we can try to provide some sort of assistance two to three months from now, when they really have a better understanding of, okay, first of all, did I, was I eligible for anything? Did I get any assistance now that there's some additional funding coming through? Or were they not eligible for anything and they've had to close for longer than we had first anticipated? The other thing that we're finding is a lot of our nonprofits are really struggling because there were some nonprofits that aren't eligible for aid. And the other thing that we're finding is any small business where the owner takes a draw or if it's a family-owned business where they're not really getting paychecks, per se, but they are drawing on their income, they are not considered employees and therefore were ineligible for some of that PPP money. So that's something that we're seeing as well.
Wendy, those that you said had applied and some of them you heard had gotten some grants, what kind of dollars did they say that they were being given?
Well, those are all, and actually, I shared that out today. It's through the IEDA website, and you can actually look and see what businesses from Jackson County have received. So those are anywhere from five thousand dollars to twenty-five thousand dollars worth of grants.
Thank you.
Wendy, is that, is that the state program you're talking about?
Yes.
Yeah. I can tell you in regard to, you know, the new authorization from, from Congress that our bank, McCoquin State Bank, will start processing those that didn't reach the deadline before. They will start, I think we'll start processing on Monday. It's been, depending on when the president signs the, the bill. And that'll just happen very quickly, I'd, I'd think. So it, it, you know, the, the process will start almost immediately on their second round of funding. Now, I don't know, that's one of the things that we tried to figure out in our talk with the revolving loan fund, is, you know, how many applicants were out there that missed the first tranche of, of funding? And there was a handful, but it wasn't a large handful of, of applicants that missed the deadline. Now, I'm all in favor of everybody who can making the application now, but I would suggest they get it started right away.
Right. And like I said, those sixteen businesses that I heard back from, I, I polled close to four hundred businesses across Jackson County and surrounding areas. But of course, you know, I, I had forty-five reply. So that's based off of really a small percentage of those businesses that even replied to me to let me know. And yeah, those sixteen had either applied and not received anything or had not applied because they missed that first deadline.
May I, could you, the outstanding...
What was that?
I asked Matt if he found out what the outstanding loan amounts were.
We have about seven hundred and forty thousand outstanding.
That's outstanding loans?
Correct.
Okay, and, and we do have about that same amount in, in money that's available. One thing I might say in regard to your question, Jack, is, and well taken, and that is that how many people are out there that are eligible for this kind of thing? Obviously, what you could do, what you might do is set up a number that available loans, a loan amount that is available. And then if there's a tremendous amount of applications, then you could go back and maybe put additional money out there. I, I, I don't know whether you need to do the whole thing right away, but kind of test the water.
I think your collateral, like you said, is gonna be minimum.
Yes.
I don't think you're gonna have, you're gonna have purity, I would say, zero.
What was that? I'm sorry.
I'm not opposed to that. It, it's just that, yeah, we're, it's gonna be a fine line that you draw who's, I think, eligible and who's not eligible, you know?
Because obviously, the more money that we wouldn't get repaid, the less we would have in revolving loan funds. If somebody would come, we, we have the Pacific Coast Feathers, which that's not what it's called. I can't remember what it is. But that closed, now we have the potential of somebody coming. I'm sure Nick will be working on bringing...
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Jack, it is, it's crackling on the line. I don't know what that is. Anybody else?
It's opening a candy...
Mike was opening a candy box. And it's made out of that, crackly, crackly material.
I didn't have breakfast!
But I, I guess, you know, when we look at somebody, the potential of somebody coming and looking at the Pacific Coast Feather building and that operation, I guess I want to make sure that we have some funds in there so that if we have to, you know, do some negotiating to make it more attractive for them to come to Jackson County, I want to be able to have some money in there that we can utilize to kind of spark that.
I totally agree with you on that, Jack. I mean, we can't give away the, we can't give, get to a point where the purpose, the original purpose of the revolving loan fund is not available anymore. And so I totally agree with that, but it's, the question is, you know, what's, what's the figure that if at all you want to put out there, whether it's fifty thousand or whatever it is, you need to, you need to keep the integrity of the revolving loan funds because the original purpose was to bring people to town and create jobs, and especially when we've lost jobs lately.
Okay, I, I guess I have a question for you, Roger. I like, yeah, of the committee of four or five people reviewing the loan applications. I, I'm not sure about, did you say that they would actually approve the loans?
Who would, they would, yes, they would, they would approve the loans to expedite it. They can bring that to the board of supervisors. I don't know how you'd exactly do that. Yeah, I would like them to approve the loans.
And then you said something about the funds would be under the auspices of the Jackson County Economic Alliance. Is that what you said?
No, no. It would just, the Jackson County Economic Alliance would simply provide some oversight and help to maybe gather the applicants in some manner, so...
It would make application, and that would go to Nick and that, they would disperse them to be reviewed?
And I apologize. I don't mean to interrupt, but I had a previously scheduled meeting at noon that I need to go to. So I want to thank you all for considering this. I know that there's a lot of need all over, both at a county and a local level, too. So thanks for considering this, and please let me know if you have any questions about, you know, what I'm hearing sort of on the front line with our businesses. And I know any help would be greatly appreciated, so thank you.
I think it's extremely important to have your input.
Thanks, everyone.
Without doubt. Thank you for joining us.
Yeah, I think we had good conversation here, and I think we, we need to keep this open, you know, to new ideas or what's been thrown out there, what Roger is if, you know, all the ifs are a lot of ifs, so. I agree. If we can do some good, I'd like to do that. I guess we almost have to wait and see if we put it out there, what kind of applicants we...
Well, I think the main thing that we as a board have to do is decide if there is a amount of money that we would be willing to set aside for this program.
Exactly, exactly. It's up to the board of supervisors to decide, you know, what if any money you want to put out there. That's, that's the starting point.
Well, but that is based on the parameters of the program. Right?
Something we could add in there, if somebody does need, say, the five thousand or whatever, but if they get some federal money or state money, you know, in two or three months, then they could pay off that note instead of leaving it out there for five, five years. That way, we can, our core group of money is back, our base is back.
Well, I think there's some things like that that we could work with Matt about to try to establish some guidelines and some rules and parameters for who would get the money and how much they'd get. I think there are a lot of things that we would have to work out. And I, we need to do that in a relatively short period of time so that if we're going to contribute some money from the revolving loan fund, we can, we can make it do the best that it can.
And that's, that, I agree with, I agree with that, Jack. I just wanted to throw out some ideas this morning so that you could mull them over. I think it's important, in my mind, that you have a group of people like Wendy or Kathy or Nick and that is, is the group that makes the decision on small business loans, not the, not the group from the revolving loan fund. Because I think that Wendy and people like Wendy, maybe in Preston, Andrew Bellevue are closer to the ground in the small businesses that are out there. So that, I, I don't, that's what, that's just my thought.
Well, I think your thought, I think that's a good idea.
I do, too.
I would, I like that better than having the revolving loan fund committee make the decisions.
I'm not opposed to the fifty thousand at all, again, on the parameters, or what's the, you know, what's the basis for the...
Well, that's, again, that's something... Well, I, that's, again, that's something that you could, you know, you could talk with Matt about, you know, what your desires are, if you wanna do anything at all, what your desires are in regard to, first of all, how much money, and, and I, I, I really want you to consider that, that we don't give away the shop so that if someone comes in, like, uh, Jack, you, you mentioned in regard to the, uh, Feather Company, uh, that we have money to provide incentives, but I, I'm all in favor of, I'm all in favor of, uh, doing something for small business.
What I was gonna offer is I could probably just off of what Roger said, maybe all the what ifs, throw some, some guidelines together, get it down out to the board, just a working document to say, yeah, we like this, we don't like this, let's add that, but yeah, we could get something like that thrown together here pretty quick and I can get it out to the group.
That'd be great.
No, I'm just kinda thinking here, but you're talking all about unsecured loans, correct? And then what was the payback?
One percent.
One percent.
Over a what period of time?
We threw five years out there, but again, that's all can be changed.
Yeah, that all can be changed. We're not doing anything in stone.
Monthly installments or annual installments?
Well, it's, it's, the reason I say that, it's so much easier, you know, if, if, maybe Matt, would it be okay with Matt to, to do the monthly payments? Maybe that's probably the safest way to do it, but you've got a lot of monthly payments, it's a little bit difficult.
Is that being paid back through ECIA or coming back directly through the county?
I'd probably propose just to have it come through us like the other ones.
Go through ECIA.
Matt, I think we could look at maybe doing some bridge loans too, where you can just do a short-term loan until it gets other money coming in, and that would be a quick turnaround without affecting your-
Yeah, because the, the one, the loan program we, we were administering for the City of Dubuque initiatives up here, that's the way that promissory note's actually written. Once you receive your federal or state funds, that, that promissory notes, you know, the money's due and payable at that time.
Okay, makes sense. Yeah, puts a parameter, or puts a-
I think there's things like that, Matt, that you could help us to create and-
Well, you've seen what they did up there.
Really great as it's going on, you know, maybe we can help some people here in a month, and then if that goes down, we can help some other, get the money back and keep rotating it around.
I guess that's my big concern, is if you people would actually be able to help.
We're on a small scale here.
So you can get that stuff to us, Matt, and we'll look at that, and then we'll maybe try to put together another Zoom meeting with the board and you.
Yeah, that'll work. Like I said, we'll get working on that right away.
And, and the one thing, the one thing, may I add, is that, um, if you're asking if you think you need to put the, the security issue in here, it's gonna probably complicate, slow up the advance of putting things together. So just consider the-
We'll take that under consideration.
Take it under consideration.
We will do that.
And let me add one, one more piece. You know, you've seen this in a lot of the federal assistance programs, um, specifically the Economic Injury Disaster Loan. They are deferring payments for a period of months at the, um, start of those loans, so that would be something that I think this program would also wanna consider, whether it be three or six months or, or something along those lines.
Well, if they had the payments on an annual basis, it would be simply going a year without a payment. But that's, again, that's up to the board to decide how they wanna do that.
But I, I, I understand what you're saying, Nick, and we can certainly consider that at the same time we're considering everything else.
Let's see what Matt puts together and we can destroy it or accept it or whatever.
I, I won't be offended.
And, and I, as I said before, I won't be either. I just tried to throw out some things that you wanna talk about. Uh, the other, the only other thing that I'd add is that, uh, you know, I brought it up at the previous meeting, and that is that, uh, there is a tremendous need out there for people, uh, for assistance, food bank, et cetera, et cetera, and, and, uh, it'd be nice if we were able to set aside a little bit of money for the, uh, Community Foundation of Jackson County Assistance Program that's, that's been set up now. That, that's a sidebar, you got enough to think about, but I wanted to mention it.
How, how do you feel?
And I'll also-
How do you feel about those assistance type fund that we have? I, I don't know what kind of balance we would even have in there, but I'm a, I'm really, uh-
I think we try to keep it at ten thousand, and then that's, it goes out.
I just really got a feeling that we're gonna have to really up that general assistance.
Well, one good thing is that Operation New View did get quite a bit of additional money through some stimulus, and they'll be able to assist people with-
Can I say that?
Rent assistance and fuel and food, which, um, would have probably stopped, but now they have additional money, and the good thing is that people don't have to be at the hundred and twenty-five percent of poverty, they can be at two hundred percent of poverty with the new money, so that should be able to help some individuals as well.
Let me just interject quick, like, I'm not a hundred percent certain that we can give money to the community foundation.
That's probably true. I, that's probably true. I, I agree.
I would-
As, that's a, that's, that's just, that's kind of a, a wish list.
I understand what you're saying, but I don't think we can do that.
I understand.
Um, as in a, as another add-on to the, to Roger's point here, um, the city in, our office helped the city of Macau apply for CDVG disaster funds, um, for the infectious disease, um, program set aside, and they were awarded, they'll be accepting their award of a hundred thousand dollars on Monday, um, and that is going directly to some food assistance, um, as well as some, uh, hotspots and other hardware for distance learning for schools amongst some other things. Um, so some of those needs are that the emergency fund that the foundation has, um, might be able to kind of enhance the service providers who are gonna get some funding through this CDBG money too, um, so we can, um, hopefully, we're all, you know, building off each other's funds, um, in this, in this time here.
The positive thing is that we do have money in the revolving loan fund, and we're not broke by any manner, and the, of the loans that are out there seem to be solid, so that's all positive stuff.
Absolutely.
Well, we'll wait for the information from Matt that we get, and we'll, uh, look that over and make talk and have some conversation again. This is easy to get together, like-
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
No, you go ahead, Roger.
Uh, the only thing I was gonna say is, Matt, could you kinda keep me in the loop a little bit too? I'd appreciate that.
Roger, I'll, I'll send, I'll include you on the email when I send out the guidelines.
Okay, sounds great.
If you don't want your children to eat candy, get them these because I've still not got this bag over. It's childproof.
Thank you very much, guys. Have a great day.
You too.
Bye. Thank you.